Good morning. This is March the 4th hearing for the Education, Workforce, Workforce and Youth Committee. I am Councilman Robert Stokes Sr., Chairman of the Committee. Um, what? I see, yeah. First, I'd like to identify the committee members. Uh, Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Um, let me see. I see Councilman Antonio Glover from the Thirteenth District.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Also, I see Councilman Cohen from the First District. I'm trying to look at this. Okay, Councilman Cohen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I see Councilwoman Middleton from the Sixth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, hold on one moment. Sorry, guys, I see Councilman Torrance from the Seventh District, Member of the Committee. Also, I see, uh... Okay, I... This is confusing. Hold on. Sorry, guys, Nina Thimless from the Mayor's Office.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Max Stegman, thank you, from the Mayor's Office. Also, Marguerite Curran, who is the host and staff of this Committee. Um, make sure I have everybody. Is there any other council people that's not part of the Committee that's on this call? Because I cannot see your name. Okay. Before we start, I'm asking all speakers and panelists to mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Speak slowly and clearly, and after you've finished speaking, please mute yourself. And again, until you are asked to speak again. The Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, along with other representatives, will give an update for Baltimore Children's Cabinet 2021 Action Plan. The Children's Cabinet was launched in October 2019 and convened city and state agency and key internal partners to align the city's collective youth-serving efforts. I'm going to now turn the hearing over to Ms. Tisha Edwards, Director of Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and ask her to introduce the panelists for the action team.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are we... Just a moment, Councilman Stokes. Are we ready to share the slide presentation staff? Great, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Stokes, and thank you, Members of the Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. We are grateful for the opportunity to be here today to present to you the Baltimore's Children's Cabinet 2021 Action Plan. The charge of the Children's Cabinet is to improve life outcomes for all of Baltimore's children and youth, and in the face of deep inequities and disparities, to position them to thrive. And from its start, the Cabinet has had a sense of urgency about this important work. This week has been a disheartening reminder of the level of urgency and focus we must take on behalf of our children and youth. On Saturday, a 10-year-old little girl, a fourth grader, was shot in the chest walking to the store near her West Baltimore home. On Monday evening, a 12-year-old was shot in the arm in Northeast Baltimore. And on Tuesday morning, minutes before noon in broad daylight, just north of downtown, a 17-year-old was shot multiple times in his lower body at North Avenue off Ramp of 83. On Tuesday night, Mayor Scott responded to the surge of senseless violence. He expressed frustration at the number of young people who have been victims of violence in Baltimore and committed to changing this unacceptable reality. He issued a call of action to all of us. If we are going to end the violence in Baltimore, reduce the disproportionate levels of trauma our young people face, and truly make their lives safer, we must address the systemic barriers that limit their opportunity and deplete their hopes and dreams. We must invest in their promise. In order for us to disrupt and dismantle these systems of oppression, we have developed a collective impact strategy that draws upon the strengths and assets of Baltimore. For the past year, nearly 200 community members have worked tirelessly to develop strategies that will address the pervasive challenges that our children and families have faced for many generations. Together with your support, we will make a meaningful difference in the lives of our children. Our shared commitment to Baltimore's children can only be realized through collective action and collective impact. And with the leadership of this administration and City Council, we can move the needle. But we have made it clear that youth are a priority, and having our city's elected officials championing the Children's Cabinet and its 2021 Action Plan positions us for impact. We will improve the lives of our children and youth, because all of us here will accept nothing less. From early on, our children have critical odds stacked against them, unacceptable odds, odds born out of racial disparities and inequities that, absent systemic change, will continue to hinder their ability to lead healthy, fulfilling lives. By investing in the Children's Cabinet priority areas, we can set a new path of lifelong possibilities for our children and youth. We are here today to ask you to join the Children's Cabinet and the workgroup members to increase early childhood development, decrease youth homelessness, decrease youth food insecurity, increase youth literacy, increase trauma-informed care for youth, increase youth diversion practices, and remove barriers to success for boys and young men of color.
Ms. Edwards, real quick, before you go any further... Sorry, I'd just like to recognize President City Council Nick Mosby and one of his staff persons, Nikki Thompson, too, also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The 2021 Action Plan is the sum of the set of a year-long effort. It presents what a broad community of people, including hundreds of youth, have said must happen to advance the seven priorities of the Children's Cabinet and improve the lives of Baltimore's children and youth. During 2021, the Children's Cabinet workgroups will launch 15 specific actions, including two actions for each priority area. As a part of the action plan, the Children's Cabinet also commits to advocating for legislative and policy changes to advance all of the priority areas. Starting now and over the next year, we will identify which of these actions have greatest potential to be scaled to improve young people's lives in measurable ways. The Children's Cabinet will work across the community and cultivate the resources to realize these actions. But the execution of the actions sits with all of us. Now, I would like to share the plan details and invite Kalila Slater Harrington to lead us off. Kalila is the Chief Program Officer at the Family League and the Community Co-Lead of the Early Childhood Work Group.
Ms. Edwards, before she starts, I would like to ask President Mosby to hear me open statements also.
Sure.
President Mosby? Nikki is the President on, you know what?
Hey, Mr. Chair, yes, I'm just here listening in.
You want to say some opening words, Mr. President?
No, you know, I don't want to take your time. I don't want to take time with the committee. I heard Ms. Edwards, now how passionate she is. You know, we've constantly talked about the importance of being committed partners with the administration, particularly as it relates to our young folks and providing a better outcome. So, look forward to continuing to work with the administration and Ms. Edwards, and you're doing a great job, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Good morning. As Tisha said, my name is Kalila Slater Harrington. I'm Chief Program Officer of Family League. Every family and child in Baltimore deserves the chance to thrive. The Baltimore's Children's Cabinet provided the structures and tools to better coordinate the various systems that impact the well-being of children and families. Before I go much further, I'd like to acknowledge my co-chair, Ms. Shannon Burrows Campbell, Director of Head Start, members of our workgroup, and the entire team of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, who worked tirelessly for children and families. The Early Childhood Work Group has worked to create a vision of what early childhood could look like in Baltimore, establish an action plan to realize that vision, and inspire and engage early childhood educators, healthcare, school officials, social services, higher ed, community partners, parents, and families to align efforts. Through a critically important relationship with the Early Childhood Advisory Council, which is charged by MSDE to create a strategic approach for all zero-to-five work, this workgroup has been able to identify and lift up these two key strategies that you see here to advance the mission over the next year. So together, we will increase access to information for and facilitate peer sharing amongst parents and publish a report on early childhood resources available in Baltimore. And while we know that the work of the Early Childhood Advisory Council and the Early Childhood Work Group spans well beyond that of the home or childcare environment, the pandemic has forced us to recognize that childcare providers are an extremely important part in the lives of families and the economic ecosystem. To ensure there is no disruption in education for children during this unprecedented time, members of the Early Childhood Work Group worked closely with providers and the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success to establish the Childcare Stability Fund, which granted $3.7 million in CARES Act funds to supplement 307 childcare centers that, in many instances, already operate on thin profit margins and struggle to provide quality services, given the requirement to maintain a safe environment and appropriately-sized workforce for the safety of the children in their care during this global pandemic. This was a big lift. We are grateful to the mayor and our partners, who worked hard to ensure that parents, children, and childcare providers have the support that they need. The COVID-19 pandemic has impacted our youngest children and their families. By focusing on the identified strategies, we are hopeful that during the recovery phase, we have built a better infrastructure to help support families as they access services for their young children, so that ultimately, they enter school ready to learn and ready to grow. Thank you. I will now pass it to Joni Hollifield, Leader of Hartz Miles and Co-Lead for the Youth Food Insecurity Work Group.
Real quick, I just want to recognize Councilman Conway from the Fourth District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kalila, and good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for this space. I'm Joni Hollifield, and I'm extremely proud to represent the Youth Food Insecurity Team. Shout out to my amazing co-chair, Holly F., our team leads, Susan Gross, Caitlin Harper, Angela Waddell, and the amazing organizations and community leaders who make up our group. But pay special attention to the title of our workgroup, Youth Food Insecurity. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the hard work, dedication, and discipline our youth leaders are putting in to really breathe life into our strategy and process. For us, this is so much more than just listening to their heartbreaking stories around food insecurity or expanding programming to meet the need. This is really building up youth advocates capable of disrupting the political scene and creating legislative and policy change for permanently destroying food insecurity among youth. And we love everybody, but teenage youth and young adults specifically is our focus. It's kind of crazy, really, that I stumbled to the forefront of this issue, because when I abandoned my career at Comcast after being so angry about how the youth handled the Freddie Gray murder, the last thing I was thinking about was buying food and feeding people. But it was so painfully obvious that there is no way that we can get our young people to search their souls for their purpose and value when their tummy rumblings are overpowering hope and drowning out voices of light. If you've ever missed a meal, then I'm sure that you can understand the urgency of our workgroup and why this is so personal. Some of our solutions we're actively working through with our youth leaders include providing support, structure, and mentoring around youth ideas that give us the Band-Aids where we need them, but also help us to build the foundation for longer-term goals. Educating our youth leaders around policy and deepening their knowledge around how to propose and pass laws that create direct impact. Helping our youth leaders understand how their experiences relate to structural racism and systematic failures that are really beyond their control. And collaborating and partnering where it makes sense and building an authentic sense of youthful community around our core message, "Food Won't Fix Hunger." Because we understand that the marathon that we're running will require us to be urgent in our patience for the long-term systematic change that's needed in this area. Our team, this team, will change this crooked landscape in Baltimore. I'll now pass it to Katie Yur, Chief of Policy and Partnerships in the Mayor's Office of Homelessness Services, Co-Lead for the Youth Homelessness Work Group.
Katie, give us just a moment. We've been... We have a technical issue getting to the next slide. Give us one moment. Councilman Stokes, I hope that you will indulge us for one moment of fixing a technical difficulty. Thank you. One more moment, please. Thank you, Joni.
Ms. Edwards, is Ms. Ferguson coming back into the meeting?
Her internet... That's the issue we're dealing with, Marguerite. Her internet has gone down.
Okay.
She just sent you an email with who we need to bring into the meeting as presenters who have access to the presentation, so she's asking...
Okay, will do, will do.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Molly, I think you have a copy of the final presentation. We've asked Marguerite to elevate you as a presenter. Can you quickly get us up to the floor?
I'm sorry, that was Ashley Bush.
And Molly Rath, R.A.T.A.
Now, you want... We can only have one presenter. Which one you want to be the presenter?
Molly is fine. Thank you.
Because I had already made Ashley. I'll make Molly. Okay, give me a second.
Thank you, Marguerite.
You're welcome. Just completed. Okay.
Thank you. All right, we are back in business. Thank you, Marguerite. All right, and we'll pass it to you, Katie. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Tisha. First things first, I would like to extend thanks to our fantastic community co-lead, who is F.T. Burden from Springboard Community Services. He has done significant work as a co-lead, and I am infinitely impressed by his dedication to serving youth experiencing homelessness here in our community. I'd like to start by saying that, again, the issue of youth homelessness is something near and dear to my heart. I've participated in a mentoring program here in the city for the past decade, and at one point several years ago, my own student experienced homelessness shortly after graduating high school. When we looked for youth-friendly housing options in the community, there simply were none. You know, my student was lucky to have that connection to the mentoring program, to have access to people who were there to advocate and help, but many youth experiencing homelessness in the city simply don't have that network and are left to navigate what is a fairly complicated system on their own. I, for one, am immensely glad to be able to say that things here are looking up in Baltimore. Our city, just this year, has been able to start work on the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program, which is a $3.7 million pilot program to expand youth-specific programming for individuals experiencing homelessness. But, you know, as grateful as we are to have this new pilot program, youth homelessness really remains a significant challenge in our community. As a whole, resources specifically dedicated for youth are extremely limited, and the city only has one major shelter to serve youth, and it is a 10-bed facility. In addition to the shortage of resources, simply identifying youth experiencing homelessness and connecting them to services can be difficult, as they're far less likely to access programs that traditionally serve adults. And getting a full grasp on the number of youth experiencing homelessness is also difficult, as youth are far more likely to be doubled up, making the issue less visible, but no less critical. So one of the major goals of our workgroup this year is to pursue additional funding to serve Baltimore city youth in need, particularly minors in need of shelter, as well as to work on deepening partnerships across our communities, both community-based organizations and government agencies, to really work on providing better connections to resources and more resources to vulnerable children and families. So with that, I will now pass to Julia Baez, who is the Executive Director of Baltimore's Promise and Co-Lead of our Literacy Work Group.
Thank you so much, Katie. So I just want to thank the City Council for hosting this important briefing today. Thank you so much to Tisha and the entire MOCSF's team for creating an inclusive and data-driven space to come together around these issues and really create actionable strategies for improving outcomes for Baltimore's youth and families. I also want to shout out and thank my co-chairs, Ernest Dorsey with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and Tanya Terrell, formerly with South Baltimore Learning Center, and now with BG&E. We also had an awesome workgroup with key representatives across the literacy continuum, city schools, Baltimore City Community College, Pratt Library, Grade Level Reading Campaign, Elevate Baltimore, faith leaders, advocates, and others. What brought us to this work and this issue area around literacy? Four years ago, Baltimore's Promise released a report that tracked the class of 2009 for six years after graduation. We saw from that data that the median income for high school graduates today in Baltimore City hovers around $15,000, well below the poverty line. As we did further analysis, we also saw that close to 80% of students graduating high school in Baltimore are reading below an eighth-grade level, many of them reading at an elementary level. And this was the reality before the pandemic. These are students who have done everything we as a city have asked of them. They come to school, they finish, they are graduating, and yet they are still shut out of real post-secondary options in the city of Baltimore. We fundamentally believe that literacy is a human right, and as one of our partners said, "There is liberation in literacy." We also believe that the structural and systemic issues of racism and concentrated poverty have led to the literacy outcomes we see today, and it is not the responsibility of any one institution or any one city agency. It will take all of us to look at the root causes and the outcomes we are seeing today. Together, this amazing workgroup co-designed strategies based on the input and advice from youth themselves on how we could activate the expertise and resources of the city government to address low literacy levels. We have proposed two strategies that we are super excited about. The first is a unique collaboration with the Summer Youth Works Program through MOED to provide a paid summer literacy acceleration program. And the second strategy is to expand and deepen support for the South Baltimore Adult High School Program in partnership with Elevate Baltimore. Thank you so much. We look forward to partnering with you on this issue as we move forward. And I will now pass it to Dr. Kyla Leggett-Creel, and I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, Assistant Professor at the University of Maryland School of Social Work, Baltimore City Health Department Office of Youth Trauma and Services Lead Strategist, and the Co-Lead of the Trauma-Informed Care Work Group.
Thank you so much, and now you can see why people call me Dr. K. It's a long name and it's very complicated. Good morning, everyone. It is such an honor to be here with you all this morning. First, I want to say thank you to Director Edwards for your amazing leadership in this work. Also, I want to thank the Trauma-Informed Care Work Group and acknowledge my co-chair, William Kellebrew, and all of the team members who have worked on this project over the past year. The workgroup has engaged in a process to establish results that we want to work towards, as well as identifying strategies that are measurable and scalable. So why are we working on this? Over the years, we have heard time and time again, young people expressing that they have experienced trauma and all of the challenges that they've faced, whether it be community violence, or domestic violence, or sexual assault, or, you know, experiencing racism and microaggressions every single day. We've also heard that they have not had a lot of people explain the impact that these experiences have on them. You know, I was talking with a young man the other day, and he said, "Well, Dr. K, you know how at night, when you're laying in bed and it's hard to fall asleep, because you just imagine you could get shot while sleeping?" And I just thought, that's the problem here, is that children are being exposed to this trauma, and then the impact is... and then the impact they're experiencing every minute of every day. So having those conversations about what's your, the reason you're having those thoughts is because you've experienced trauma. And we need to offer some healing. We need to all begin the healing work together as a community. Youth have expressed that they are, that they have experienced this trauma. They've been told that therapy is not something that is helpful. They've been told, "Well, that's just crazy." And so there's a lot of stigma around mental health. There's a lot of stigma around accessing mental health services. It also, we've heard, is that many times the mental health services that are available, there are barriers to accessing those services. And many times the services that are available are not culturally relevant. We cannot possibly detangle the relationship between systemic racism and trauma in Baltimore City, around the country as well, but specifically in Baltimore City with the history of redlining, the history of the systemic racism that has occurred and continues. So the services have to be culturally relevant and accessible for the young people to be able to do the healing work. So listening to those voices of the young people with their wisdom and expertise in voicing what is needed. The Trauma Informed Work Group has heard these messages and wants to do something about it. So two results have been established. The first one gets to the issue of awareness and addressing stigma around mental health. So young people from Baltimore will be creating and producing a citywide media campaign to educate youth about mental health, as well as decreasing stigma, so that young people can know they're not alone, they're not crazy, that what they're experiencing is the effect of the trauma that they've experienced. And so there will be a special focus on boys and young men of color in the media campaign. And the wonderful thing about this media campaign is it is being written, developed, and produced by young people in Baltimore. Their voices are being lifted up, and they can lead the way. The second result that we want to accomplish is to really create a system of care that is trauma-informed for Baltimore City that is culturally relevant. This means finding out how much trauma have children experienced, how many traumas, what are those traumas, as well as what do we do about it? We want to be able to say, yes, we know that, you know, kids have experienced this number of traumas, and then what? So accessing services without barriers, getting those barriers out of the way, and making sure they're culturally relevant. And making sure that supports are available to the youth where they are, whether it be in schools, on the streets, in the homes, but that they shouldn't have to come out and search for those services, but those services should be right there where they need it. And that they are culturally relevant, so that they make a difference. So thank you so much. And I will now pass to Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown, Baltimore City Police Department Patrol Support Services and co-lead of the Youth Diversion Work Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. K. And good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Council President, and Councilmembers, and all elected officials for the opportunity to present today. And if you've seen BPD's current recruiting campaign, then you've heard me share this story. When I was early in my career in patrol, I had a young man that I noticed, you know, daily in the same area, who wasn't attending school and was beginning to, you know, involve themselves in the drug trade. I had countless conversations with him about the importance of education and how selling drugs would lead him on a negative path in life. I eventually was able to make a deal with him, that if he went to school and got good grades, that, you know, I would reward him of something of his choosing. I started to see him less. He wasn't on a corner as much. And only time that I really would see him is when he wanted to show me his report cards and how he was progressing, of course, in his education. And during that time, I didn't realize the impact it would have on his life or that I was engaging in some form of diversion, even though it wasn't practical. But instinctively, I knew it was better for him to be in school than for me to arrest him. And the biggest reward for us both was that he graduated. So the passion for me is that our children aren't just our future, they are our right now. And I want to extend a passionate thank you to all of the Youth Diversion Work Group members, including representatives from Annie E. Casey Foundation, Attentors Works Maryland, Baltimore City State Attorney's Office, of course, BPD, Department of Juvenile Justice, Excellence and Ambition, SETCO Stand Up Baltimore, the Family League, and Officers of Performance and Innovation, and No Boundaries Coalition. And a warm, warm thank you to our work group co-lead, Sue Fathergill, the Director of Strategic Programming at Attentors Works Maryland. Last year, the members of the Youth Diversion Work Group met monthly with the intention of complementing the implementation of the first youth interactions policy for the Baltimore Police Department. And as a result of this policy, there are better guidelines that inform officers how to interact with youth, but to divert them pre-arrest versus the post-arrest as we had operated before. This interactions policy and action items relate because both share the common goal of diverting our young people away from the criminal justice system and into more positive pathways of community support. We have all had instances when we have seen a youth or even a group of youth participating in risky behavior. What do we do? And who do we call? That's normally the common, you know, theme of all community. The Youth Diversion Work Group is increasing to, is working to increase youth diversion practices by engaging the community in the diversion process. While we are accustomed to calling the police when things are wrong, police officers aren't always the best response to a group of youth doing something that is normal to them, but troublesome to others. And that is why the work group will engage the community in the diversion process by launching an alternative to 911, which will be designed as a hotline to immediately connect youth to mentors and clinicians as needed. Police officers who come in contact with youth will also be able to divert to these opportunities. Furthermore, we will provide technical assistance to community-based programs that can be leveraged as diversion opportunities to grow and expand the portfolio of diversion options available. Most importantly, we will track and evaluate the impact of these diversion practices to reflect on and adjust our approaches needed. In a perfect world, the implementation of our action items will lead to systemic change by preventing youth from entering a system that was designed to place barriers in the way of their success and instead connect them with opportunities that will propel them to grow out of their risky behavior and into mature citizens, while at the same time reporting out to city and state agencies the implications of said connection. Thank you for your attention, and I look forward to your opportunities to collaborate with you all in the future to increase youth diversion practices. And again, our youth are our, not just our future, but also our right now. And I will turn it over to Ricardo O'Neil, President and CEO of We Will All Rise Incorporated, and co-lead of Success for Boys and Young Men of Color Work Group.
Ms. Brown, real quick, I just want to identify Councilwoman Porter, who is a member of this committee from the 10th District. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel Lon Brown. Again, good morning. My name is Ricardo O'Neil. Yeah, I always first identify that I'm a father of two little ones, one in pre-K, four Maxwell, and my second graders Zoe in Hamilton Elementary School. They're my inspiration for living and doing this work. But I'm also the President and CEO of We Will All Rise, Inc., a nonprofit anchored right here in Baltimore. We have an explicit focus on supporting college and career readiness for young men of color, especially those seeking to pursue careers in education. I'm also pleased to speak this out this morning as a co-lead of the Children's Cabinet Work Group on Boys and Young Men of Color Success. I'm grateful to my co-lead, Dr. Andre Budley, Director of the City's Office of African-American Male Engagement. I also want to thank James Green, our phenomenal staffer who supported our work, and to express deep gratitude to the members of the work group for their dedicated service during these unprecedented times. Research shows that boys of color, also as a matter of fact, do significantly better in school when they have more black male teachers throughout their K-12 careers. Consequently, fewer young men will become entangled in juvenile justice, the juvenile justice system. They're also more likely to graduate, pursue higher education, or enroll in training programs for in-demand skills. In the long term, we see more young men in the workforce, the emergence of stable families, and the reduction of crime and other risky behaviors. We believe more investment and reimagined policies targeting young men of color will result in thriving families and neighborhoods across the city. Finally, I want to share one example about why I'm involved with this work. Recently, on the verge of graduating college, a young man reached out to let me know that he was struggling to make it through the first semester because his brother and cousin were murdered in the span of two months. How do you react? How do you inspire a young man to press on in circumstances such as those? Even when we send our best and brightest away, the conditions at home can threaten their chances of success. The policies for which we're advocating are crucial if we want our young men to excel. We simply cannot afford not to act. I want to, on behalf of the Boys and Young Men of Color Success Work Group, I want to thank you for your attention, and we look forward to working with you in the coming months and years. I will now turn this back over to Director Edwards, Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
First, I want to thank all of my community co-leads for stepping up and making a commitment to this work with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. We cannot do this alone. And so with gratitude, we just, we're overwhelmed by your support and commitment. And so thank you, everyone, for being here today and for the many, 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 many hours and Zoom meetings that we've had from 2020 into 2021. Councilmembers, you have heard the 14 specific key actions the Children's Cabinet will collaborate across the community to implement, starting in 2021. Some of these will rise to the top in terms of scalability and impact. And that is where we will place our focus in 2022, in order to move the needle and affect real change for our young people. But programs and initiatives alone will not make a difference. The inequities and disparities that prevent our youth from achieving success are rooted in structural racism and generational poverty. Improving outcomes for children requires systemic, not programmatic, change. The Children's Cabinet will advocate for legislation and policies that break through systemic barriers and increase access to the opportunities and resources our young people need to succeed and thrive. Specifically, the Children's Cabinet will champion policy and legislative changes that address the challenges identified in each of its seven priority areas. Too often, advocacy efforts are narrowly focused. This advocacy effort will bring together organizations and partners who may have acted independently in the past to support now a collective agenda. The Children's Cabinet will also amplify the voices of youth to put their voices at the center of conversations with decision-makers about the issues and solutions that matter most to them. I want to thank you for your time and your patience in allowing us to present the Children's Cabinet Action Plan today. And many, many thanks to our Children's Cabinet members for joining me in presenting this vast and vital body of work. Councilwoman Stokes, I want to say to you that I personally appreciate your partnership. Anytime I ask you to do something for young people, the answer is always yes. So thank you, Councilwoman Stokes, and other members of the committee who I've had the pleasure of partnering with in my role in the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. But now, Councilwoman Stokes, I'd like to pass it over to you and the committee members for any questions or follow-ups that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. I just have a few words. I remember when you first started this, about in 2019, we were over at a church in West Baltimore. So your staff and your partners, I know where it started. And it's hard sometimes to keep people together and get to this point. So your staff, your partners should be congratulated because we got to that point and where we are now. So to you, thank you also. Also, I want to identify Stuart Proctor Graham Humphrey with the Downtown Sailing Center, who's on this virtual call. So we have to identify our young people who take the time and interest in this. And I also want to mention about a couple of months ago, I introduced a bill about systemic racism as a health crisis. So Ms. Edwards, I look forward to looking, working with you, but looking at that lens on how the systemic racism affects our young people here in the city. Because we know it does, and we got to look at it, and we can't just use the buzzwords. We have to do work. And equity sounds so good, but that's a buzzword. We need to put the work in. So, thank you. We will take public testimony? Okay. Well, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna reverse this. I'm gonna go with the committee members first, and my mother taught me ladies are first. So we're gonna start off, we're gonna do each council person, we're gonna do two questions. And if we move pretty fast, we can come back to a second round. So the first committee member that I will be asking to have two questions is Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District.
Thank you so much, Chairman Stokes. I know I came to this briefing a little late. I was just looking at, looking at the presentation. But currently, right now, I don't have any follow-up questions. I just want to thank you all for not only prioritizing the youth, but giving them a substantial seat at the table. So thank you so much. If I do have any additional questions, I'll definitely follow up.
Thank you. The next committee member, Councilman Bullock from the 9th District.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Again, similar to Councilwoman Porter, don't have any questions, however. I just want to thank this group. It's a great cross-section of folks. I mean, we've talked of everything from, from young people in terms of make sure they stay out of the criminal justice system, but then also things as far as mental health and homelessness. And so again, food insecurity, I mean, you guys are really, you know, tackling this from a holistic point of view. So I really do appreciate it. I mean, I think it's a wonderful start. So again, for our partners in the community, who are now only putting, you know, their minds and resources, the city agencies are also coming together. So I think this is a wonderful evolution of this project. So again, thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Zecor from the 1st District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everyone and Director Edwards. Let me say that I appreciate the enormous amount of listening to communities and the commitment to collaboration that went into this document and the work ahead. You all have brought some amazing people together, just like my colleague said, to uplift the needs of our young people while consistently elevating both their strengths and their voices as well. So I have two specific questions. The first is around the literacy piece. Could we utilize older students to help younger students learn to read? We know that in Baltimore, we have a rich tradition of peer-to-peer. Programs like Algebra Project have really blazed a path and shown us that young people do extremely well when they are learning from each other. And we know that we have some brilliant older young people who can be part of that process. That's my first question. Second question is around trauma. And when we discuss trauma with children, I, one, appreciate the focus. I think it's also important, though, to acknowledge our children's strength and that they're not just their trauma, and we all know this, but that they are great and resilient despite the challenges that they face. And I really appreciated Director Edwards at the end sort of acknowledging the systems that collude against our kids, because we know that in Baltimore, it's really the systems that shape trauma through policies of white supremacy. And so just to keep in mind, you know, as we do the peer-to-peer mental health work, just the importance of our young people not feeling pathologized or like they're broken, but really acknowledging that it is the systems that shape disparate outcomes and that we have a real role in dismantling those systems.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen, for that feedback and those questions. I'm going to defer to Julia, who is the community co-lead for literacy, to speak on the peer-to-peer literacy opportunities. And Dr. K, because I know you have a real passion for this healing and resiliency. As the end, the trauma is, might where we be start, but where we're going is to be healed and to develop resiliency. So I'd like for you to comment on that.
Sure, thank you. So, Councilman Cohen, you know, I totally agree with that question and statement. So I'll answer in two ways. One, within the adult high school model that we are partnering with Elevate Baltimore around, there is already built into that model a peer mentorship component. there is already built into that model a peer mentorship component. So, that is intentional, certainly to center young people's leadership voice and ownership and the work as we move forward. We've also looked at that as far as the earn and learn model with youth work. So, we have a set of young people who have already participated over the past three years in a summer remediation program post-high school. And those young people have been at the table helping to guide what the, like, program could look like in the future for younger students. And we're hoping to bring those young people back actually, potentially in an instructor role, coach role, mentor role, but to partner with the younger students as they sort of move through their high school pathway. So, we have heard that both from the adults at the work group, but has been a huge push from all of the young people to make sure that they have an opportunity to lead this content and not just be receiving instruction as it relates to the future of literacy in Baltimore.
Thank you so much, Councilman Cohen. I loved your question, and so it's wonderful to know that we are exactly aligned. The focus is on healing. So, the group of youth who are working on the media campaign are part of the Healing Youth Alliance, where they are trained on using the Healing Centered Engagement Framework created by Sean Genwright, which is based, culturally based, and really focuses on not defining people by the worst moment in their life, but rather the strengths that they bring to the table. So, all of the work is informed with this Healing Centered Engagement Framework. So, that we're talking about what strengths people have, collective healing, and it's grounded in culture and history, which is how we bring in the messaging around, it is the systems that have created this trauma. So, we need to understand how it was created so that we can dismantle it. And then youth are focusing on the messages of how do we heal as a community? And they're using the South African philosophy of Ubuntu and the connection, the interconnection of all parties involved. So, it is I am because we are. And so, that is the framework that we're using moving forward. And the storytelling is about the healing and coming together as a community and not the defining people by their worst moment. So, thank you for your question.
Thank you. Appreciate your commitment to this work.
Councilman Cohen, did you do you too? I'm sorry.
I did my too. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Thank you. Real quick, before I go to the next council, I just want to mention that I put a core group of community leaders that would like to be in touch with different work groups. They are paying particular attention to systemic change as it relates to youth trauma, housing, education, and economics. And those are some community leaders that we put together to address that type of change that we're talking about. And also, it's a collaboration, cross collaboration. And we recreate the village within our communities is key to dismantle racism systems in our city. So, I have already started working on it. So, I just wanted to share that with the group. I think that's important that we bring the community leaders outside of this group so they can see it a little different also, and then bring them into this bigger group so everybody can bring their expertise and their experiences to the table so we can really move forward in addressing and helping our young people. Our next committee member would be Councilman Antonio Glover from the 13th District. Councilman Glover? Councilman Glover? Okay, we're gonna come back to Councilman Glover. Our next committee member is Sharon Middleton, Councilwoman Sharon Middleton from the 6th District and the Vice President of the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just sitting here, you know, first of all, listening to this. This is just a wonderful thing that's happening. And of course, we, it's just perfect timing of everything. Finally, a way of including our young people and giving them a seat at the table for democracy is, this is just amazing. So, I just want to thank this whole team that has spoken today and putting your commitment in this, in this project and helping our young people that are so in need is just so important. So, I can't thank you enough. I just want to kind of piggyback on just one aspect that Councilman Cohen had. He mentioned literacy, and it just made me think of the resolution that I put in for financial literacy. And I'm gonna be bringing a group, you know, with the school system and other parts together and just hope that you can also be a part and support this. Because I really think it's necessary that we put that subject as a course or a requirement in the high schools and very deeply. Because of the many problems that our children face today, we know that, you know, they come out of, a number of them come out of high school and they're not, they don't have a bank account. They don't just have the simple things in life that is the beginning of being a self-sufficient person. So, I hope that you can somehow weave this into the youth cabinet. Can you just make a, can someone make a comment about that?
So, thank you for bringing up that specific issue, Councilwoman Middleton. And I think you're 100% right when we talk about literacy. Literacy spans financial literacy, it is your kind of traditional reading and writing, it's digital literacy. So, there's a whole scope of support that our young people need in the area of literacy. And that is why we think that this hub, this adult high school hub is so important because we want our young people to always get the whole continuum of care and the continuum of opportunities. So, I think you're exactly right. We want it to be as inclusive and as far-reaching as possible. And it spans all kinds of literacy to position young people to thrive. So, thank you for your leadership and that work. Thank you for lifting that up for us. And absolutely, we want to bring those conversations together and bring it to the table. So, thank you so much. Julia, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that?
I was just high-fiving in the chat box, but yes, Councilwoman Middleton, we totally agree. The definition that young people and community members came together around to define what we meant by literacy was inclusive, not just of the academic component, but literacy for life. How do you complete an application? We talked about the impact of COVID on folks being able to read medical instructions, right? Like, there's, there's all sorts of issues around literacy and just operating day-to-day. And so, that was certainly part of the conversation. And we can be more intentional in how we make those connections and lift that up moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you. I think that ends it. I just, I just want to add that I can't say it enough with all the pressing issues that we are going through now, even through COVID. This just, this whole idea has come at a very needed time. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Real quick, before I go back to, see if Councilman Glover's on. I just was listening to Councilman Cohen. Back when I used to run the Mass Station Oliver, we reached out. And Ms. Edwards, you worked in the school system. We reached out to a lot of the retired teachers or principals, and they would come over to Harford Heights and read to the kids over at the school. So, that might be another resource, Ms. Edwards, you could use since you have access for working at the school system. That we use those retired principals and teachers that might want to come back with what Councilman Cohen was talking about in terms of helping our kids read also. Thank you. Councilman Glover? Okay. Councilman, Member of the Committee, Councilman James Torrance of the 7th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Edwards and Cabinet Members. I just want to say, I want to lift up this work because as someone who has been in the predicament that many of the students and young people that you've talked about, that's my story, that student that was at college and a family member was murdered. Or the fact that I came from public housing and I didn't have the same opportunities that my other counterparts did, but I used those opportunities to be where I am today. But one of the things I would characterize your policy areas is access to opportunities which are provided. And I think, I just want to lift that up because we often don't think about the fact is that the opportunity gap in Baltimore is based off your zip code. And I just want to say I'm thankful for your work. And I'm looking forward, I'm like literally taking notes and emailing my staff because there are areas where we've already started thinking about how we can assist our youth. And we're ready to get the work going a lot of these areas with you guys. And I just want to share those thoughts and say thank you again.
Thank you for that, Councilman. We need the help. So, I'm glad that you're leaning in and offering to support. That's why we're here today, is we want the council to know what the work is. We want the council to find ways to get involved. And I appreciate you and all of the council members just being present, right? Just being here matters and getting the information. And then the next step is let's, let's do this. So, thank you for that, and thank you to the other council members. But we're very excited about your support, and we need the support.
Thank you. I'm gonna try Councilman Glover again.
It seems like everything is working fine over here now. So, my apologies to everyone.
Yeah, but you only get one question because you took too long. No, you still have two, Council.
This is all good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. So, my question is, you know, how can we increase literacy in high schoolers and post-high school given the current curriculum?
Julia, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yes, I'm sorry. Could you clarify the end of the question? My internet went out. I heard high school curriculum, but I couldn't hear the whole question.
So, how, how can we increase literacy in the high schools and post-high school given the current curriculum that we have?
Yeah, I think that is a great question. Thank you so much. So, we've been working really closely with city schools, Chief High Hubbard, as well as other members of the school system, Janice Lane, Dr. Pfeiffer, and Dr. Santalisis have all been part of conversations around, like, where are there opportunities for innovation? How can we consider other spaces where young people also exist in the city of Baltimore? So, how do we support out-of-school time programs and summer learning programs to increase literacy? And how do we provide more adults, more time, more space in high school for young people who may need additional support around literacy? The passage of Kerwin is critical to bringing those additional resources into the city. Because right now, the district is just under-resourced in terms of providing the resources they need for high school students. So, there's been a couple of models that have been lifted up. City schools is also beginning to look at the schedule for high school students in Baltimore so that there is more time built in for partnerships, tutoring, coach classes, study hall, all the things that young people have lifted up that they want. To Councilman Cohen's question earlier, the other thing that young people have expressed the need for is a real focus on restoration and how we rebuild relationships between older youth in the city, teachers, and other important adults. And so, that has been a real push as a foundation of any work of really thinking about improving literacy. But the district has been really open. We, we have a research report coming out. We've looked at about 10 other districts across the country around what they're doing, how we can learn best practices from other places, and what's already happening in the city of Baltimore, both in classrooms with teachers and in community that we can bring into the school. So, I can send more information on where we are and what the proposed strategies are. But there's a lot of willingness to try some new things because we know we haven't gotten it right yet.
Okay, thank you. And may I have my second question, Mr. Chair? All right, and cool. So, given that college isn't for everyone, what other opportunities are there for kids that choose not to take that path?
So, I-
Can you hear me? Because I'm having problems.
Yes, I can hear you, Councilman Glover. So, this is not about college. Or, you know, this is really about positioning kids to be able to have choices, right? And so, our work isn't literacy for college. It is what do you need in order to thrive? You need, as Sid, you know, we have young people, there's all this literature going out about COVID that they engage in the literature because they don't have- Lord. Can you hear me?
It froze a little bit, but you can continue.
Okay. My computer's down, so I don't know what's hap- But to your point, Councilman Glover, I want you to know that this isn't about either/or. This is about success in life and literacy for life. And if we do our job of giving young people the foundation, then they can make the choice for themselves. So, we're not entering this work with a point of view about all kids must go to college. Sorry about the technical difficulties here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Before we go to public testimony, I know President Mosby is on this call. I wanted to reach out to him and see if he had any questions or any additional comments. Okay. Must have left.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one quick thing?
Sure.
I know that they, Tisha, I know you kind of mentioned, I think, a little bit about homelessness and housing. Is Loving Arms, Inc. a part of this? Or I know you heard of Loving Arms, Inc., that housing facility for teenagers?
I have heard, I have heard of Loving Arms. I'm gonna refer to Katie York, who is out of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and a co-lead for the work group. Katie, have we been, have we engaged them in this process and the work that we're doing?
So, they were previously funded by the city, but at this point are not an active partner.
Okay, because I know they deal with runaway teens and they have a whole counseling process and trying to get, you know, I just want to know if there's some kind of connect there because they've been around a long time.
Yeah, thank you for lifting up. We'll follow up on that, Councilman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We're gonna be taking some public testimony. For those who signed in and using a computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. We will start with you. Then next, we will go through all the users who have called into the hearing, attendees who called and cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the committee staff, which is Mrs. Kern, one by one. You will hear two beats when you are unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of the testimony. If a caller doesn't, does not want to provide testimony, you simply need to say that you don't, that you don't want to provide testimony after the two beats. Thank you, Ms. Kern. Do we have any public testimony?
Mr. Chair, as of this moment, no one has raised their hand. And there are no call-ins.
Okay, I'm, I know we are at the end of this. I'm gonna ask the committee members if they have one more question and then we can move on to conclude this public testimony. So, any of the colleagues, Councilman Bullock, do you have one more question?
Okay, not at this point, but again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone who participated.
Councilman Cohen?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Glover?
Good, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sharon Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's all been answered.
Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no further questions.
Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no further questions as well.
And Councilman Conway? Any additional questions? Councilman Conway? Okay, he must have dropped off. Well, this concludes the testimony. No votes taken for legislative oversight hearings, but I'd just like to thank my colleagues. I would like to thank Ms. Edwards and her hard work and her staff, but thank the partners because the only way this could work is we have to all work together. We cannot do this by ourselves. And I know this work requires funding, Ms. Edwards. So, as the council, we need to make sure you get enough funding so you can expand this program, because our young people need opportunities. We need to make sure this program grows, because they, you know, I'm gonna use what Glover said, even though we're not talking about college, opportunities is the ones that don't want to go to college. So, you know, we have to present that opportunity for them, open that door for them. And if we don't do that, then we have failed as a community. We have failed as elected officials, and we have failed as adults in the city. And we have to help our young people. We cannot blame nobody else but ourselves. So, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, my colleagues, for what you do, and thank my councilpersons, the work that they do in their district, and just thank a host of everybody that's really gonna make a difference. And I think this, right here, what you're doing, is gonna make the difference in our young people. And we're gonna show all over the world that Baltimore City cares about the young people, and this is gonna be a great model in Baltimore City. So, thank you. Have a good evening. And Ms. Edwards, if you'd like to say a few words before we conclude this public testimony?
I just want you to hold me, continue to hold me accountable, Councilman Stokes, which is what you do best, is you say to me what's happening, give me a progress update. And I would, I would hope that this committee will indulge us to come back and do a progress report and let you know the status on the work, the challenges, what we're learning. And yes, sir, funding. We will be back to have that conversation. And thank you for always being open today. You say you can't get no work done without no money, so. So, I appreciate that.
This is Landon Lott. So, thank you. I want to thank everyone for attending the hearing. The hearing has concluded. Everybody have a great day and be safe.
Thank you.